It's 2:00, so we're going to call the meeting of the Rules and Open Government Committee for Wednesday, May 29 to order. Let's start with Roll.
Davis?
Here.
Jimenez?
Rose.
Cami?
Here.
Foley Cohen?
Here.
We have court.
Okay, we are going to start by reviewing the council agenda for next week, Tuesday, June 2.
Fourth.
Our fourth, thank you. No, the wrong, this is, that's the June 11th, we need to do the June 4th. Is that the right one? Oh, that is the right one, sorry, I thought that said 11th. Okay, meeting starts 9:30, closed session, 1:30 open session. Consent starts on page four, continues on pages five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, can I count, 15? And ends on page 16. Section 3, we have a renewal of the Willow Glen Benefit Improvement District and Maintenance District Budget Reports. Section 6, we have actions related to the regional wastewater facility, and then we have our sewer use charges, storm sewer service charges, our residential garbage recycling rates, San Jose Muni water rates. Section 8, we have public hearings for the downtown business improvement district and the Japan Town Business Improvement District, and then also the San Jose Hotel Business Improvement District. And there's one item on land use consent that will be heard right after regular consent. So let's see if we have any public comment.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman. I'm going to be in town for the next few weeks, until about June 18 or so. So, hi to everyone. The two items I wanted to bring up on this agenda that were of interest were water rate issues and overall stormwater issues. With water rate issues, I, you know, your rates raising is small, it's incremental, but it's been continuing over the past few years. I hope with these sort of water rate issues, you could be very much willing to describe to the public choices they can have in help to pay for these rate increases, and that sort of conversation can always be open and accessible and understandable for all of us. With that said, the other item about water, stormwater issues and sewer issues, I think there's a few items on this upcoming agenda and the agenda in the following week that I think can be related to, you're going to have an upcoming meeting with the Water Agency here in San Diego, San Jose. It's going to be a big public meeting, and a really important one, and I listened to you guys talking about it, and the importance of how you really want to work on state and federal legal issues, and you have a really important stake in that, in understanding of that, and good for you, and I thank you for that. I think what the Water Department can come through with is what really takes place at the local level, and the feelings that people have, and human rights ideas at the local level, that I hope yourselves here at San Jose can be prepared to want to address. I know you want to wrap it up into a, for both the Water Department, you to understand both your side and their side of human rights values.
Back to the committee.
All right, thank you. There is no ad sheet this week. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Any hands? Nope. All right, let's vote. Okay, the motion carries for zero, with one upset today. And now we're going to do our first review of the meeting on Tuesday, June 11. Scheduled for a 9:30 closed session, 1:30 regular session, and an evening session at 6:00 PM. Consent starts on page four, continues on five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. Section 3, we have a discussion about the allocation of Measure E, Mayor's June Budget Message, approval of the operating capital budgets, and the fees and charges, approval of our contract with OE3, IAFF. Section 5, Milligan Parking Lot Project. Section 6, stormwater permit issues. Section 8, Downtown Residential High-Rise Incentive Program Extension. We also have a redevelopment successor agency item, which will be heard immediately after consent, and then we have land use for the evening session. Two items on consent, and then item 10.2, which is a mobile home park designation, and 10.3, emergency residential shelters ordinance. Let's see if we have any public comment on the agenda.
Blair?
Hi, thank you. To try to quickly conclude, as there's stormwater issues, permit issues on this item, to quickly conclude, good luck how the public at this really important upcoming public meeting that you'll have at the Water Department on the future, you know, homeless around stormwater, and the needs of cleaner water, that's what the argument is. Good luck in how the public can understand what you're trying to work towards in legal terms with state and federal agencies, while at the same time, I hope yourselves can be really open to what the public has to say, and when you hear their human rights needs and values, that does mean a lot. Good luck in all of us working in this sort of balance for this item. And the other item I wanted to mention was the, some calls a small garbage collection, I can't quite remember its name, but it's a service, a small garbage collection thing. I'm sorry, I don't know its better name, but I felt it may be appropriate to mention the use of the Big Bellies in downtown and other places as a garbage collection device. But I just wanted to remind yourselves that it was sold to us a few years ago, it would have trash compacting capabilities, and I don't know if you've noticed after all these years now, but it doesn't. And, you know, the government has, our local government has seriously lied to us about that, and that wasn't good, and we really have to learn, it's an important lesson how we talk about the future of our technology, and what we're honest, and how we talk about it. Subtly, we make mistakes, I'm more used to subtly making mistakes, I have those problems. But when you outright lie about, you know, its capabilities of the tech, that's bad. That, I think, we can solve easily. Good luck in working on the subtleties of making things open and clear. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
All right, thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. I think for 6.1, I suggest that we move it to our last budget hearing on Monday, June 10, instead of having it on June 11. That way, we can actually, because as it stands right now, it would actually be heard after, after we talk about the June Budget in 3.3 and 3.4, so it seems like it makes sense to go on Monday, June 10 instead.
So you want to wrap it up into a motion?
Yeah, so I'll move the approval of the June 11 agenda, but moving item 6.1 to the June 10 agenda.
Yeah, makes sense, and to clarify, I think I understand the Water Board is not available, the Water Board will not have representation at either date, either 10th or 11th, but I think what we'd be asking for is still a staff presentation that talks about what it is that the Water Board is expecting out of our stormwater permit, and what expenditures come along with making sure that we meet our obligations under the stormwater permit. Do you have any feedback or comments, Lee, before we move to a vote?
Only that, yes, staff will be prepared for the 10th, and will work very closely with the Attorney's Office on how we present that material.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the committee?
I need a second.
Oh, we need a second, sorry, yes. Okay, we got a motion in a second, so let's vote. Sergeant, Sergeant. All right, we got, that carries for zero. Now we are on to our consent agenda for today's rules meeting. We have four items on consent, and we'll start with public comment.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman. For item 2, San Juan Salsa Festival, sponsored by Council District 1. Thank you for this. I think salsa music and salsa festivals are really important. There's a beat to salsa music that's really, it has a really nice rhythm to it. It's kind of like a mellow heartbeat rhythm, yet you're moving around and dancing, it's a good combination. I wanted to thank Councilperson Jimenez, who spoke a few weeks ago, that he had visited Guadalajara, Mexico recently, and attended their weekend. You know, they close down streets and just have a big fiesta marketplace, where people just, you know, it's not just people, you know, and vendors and community life, it's government providing services, it's a lot of things in a local community. It was just really nice to hear. It's definitely the ideas of how we talk about the future of Vision Zero in this country, and you know what, Viva, Viva Calle and Viva San Jose, things were here, I've been here in the past, that was totally what Guadalajara things do, and it was just a really nice description, it was nice to hear him talk about it as he did, and, ah, man, that's where I'm headed with my life, basically, so it was, it was nice. So with that, I also wanted to quickly remind, I had written a public, a letter to public record last week about private G issues happening in a local neighborhood, I hope that issue's being addressed, and it's an open public process that's going on with it. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
All right, is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, let's vote. All right, motion carries for zero. So now we're going to bring, we have brought back the Walnut Mobile Home Residence item that was brought a couple weeks ago by Councilmember Jimenez. We have a policy analysis, Lee, do you want to give us an overview?
Sure, I'll be brief. It is a yellow light, based off of the workload analysis, because it does require additional resources to meet the direction, and Andreas Flores Shelton and Rick Scott from the team are here to answer any questions that the committee has.
All right, thank you. We're going to start and see if we have any public comment.
No public comment.
Okay, any, Councilmember Jimenez, you want to start off?
Let me just first say thank you for the information. It's actually not what I expected to see. It's much more than, you know, much more expensive and much, maybe a little bit more complicated than I anticipated, which I realize most things that the city are, in addition to more expensive than we anticipate in most cases and scenarios. I guess I had a few questions, and let me think through who I can call down, and I'll just ask a question, actually, whoever you think is best equipped to answer it. And so, for example, in, on page three, it, let me see if I can find the spot, there's a lot of information here, so I, so actually on page four, the second paragraph, it says, "If expanding trash storage at Mayberry Yard were pursued," and this is, this conversation and the comments here are related to maybe moving some of the trash to other locations or diverting away from the South Yard. So that's the context under that I asked this question. So, it says, "If expanding the trash storage at Mayberry Yard were pursued because of its central location, it would require updating existing permits with multiple regulatory agencies and most likely lead to significant capital improvement requirements." I understand, I think in theory, I haven't been at the Mayberry Yard in a long time, but the capital improvements required to take on more trash. What I'm curious about, if someone could speak to the additional permits, it seems, and costs associated with that, if we're bringing more trash in, because I think there, they're already getting about 29, 2,900 tons of trash from Beautify SJ, I think is what I read, and I'm curious, what triggers that? So, the reason I ask that, and the sort of the context in my mind, is I know that the Beautify, and correct me if I'm wrong as I'm saying this, this issue's been going on a little while, that the Beautify SJ garbage and trash, and some of the stuff that's being brought to the South Yard, wasn't always brought to the South Yard, and I'm curious if, when it was moved to the South Yard, and again, I don't recall exactly when that was, did that not trigger new permit and regulatory fees as well, or? And let me know if some of that doesn't make sense.
No, it made sense, Councilmember Jimenez. So, good afternoon, Rick Scott, DOT Assistant Director. I think the answer about, you know, permitting requirements is that it would take more analysis on our part to figure out. We do have staff who have background and experience in the regulatory environment that we're in, so they know generally what would trigger it, excuse me, and if we're almost doubling the amount of waste that comes into the yard, it does then, you know, potentially, and again, we don't know the full magnitude of the cost, that would be part of the workload, is determining how, you know, to figure out what permits are needed, what regulatory bodies would need to be informed as to the change, because there are certain pieces of infrastructure installed specifically at the Mayberry Yard, there's a lot that's dumped there, so as the, as the magnitude increases, there are just kind of things we don't know yet, that we know we need to investigate if we were almost doubling the amount of trash we're taking on. As far as your question for the South Yard, you know, I started with the city in 2013, I believe we've had illegal dumps brought to the South Yard since well before then. I, you know, I said the magnitude, I can't speak to the change, I know there probably has been an increase to beautify San Jose over the years.
Okay, all right. And the other, and actually, before I ask any other question, let me just, it's in the memo, or in the response, and you all acknowledge some of the work you all have done, and so I wanted to thank you for, I know you, we've been at many meetings with the, with the residents of the Walnut Home Park, discussing challenges, and also talking about potential solutions, so I very much appreciate that, all the work that's been done. And so I know we've been actively, collaboratively, trying to find a solution. I think part of the thing for me is, I know we've even established a line which folks can reach out to the South Yard, and I think you can attest to the fact that there hasn't been much of that outreach, so you don't get a lot of calls from the neighboring residents. I think part of that, in my mind, in talking to some of the residents, knowing some of the residents, is just simply that this is, this is an issue that I think, what prevents them from reaching out, I think, is, and what comes to mind, is just that this community, I think, it really embodies some of the challenges we often talk about in many city subjects, related to language barriers, related to immigration status, just a whole lot of layers of things, I think, that play into them not reaching out, maybe, you know, not feeling confident, and feeling like government agents are going to be responsive, things of that nature, right? They should be reaching out, but I know they haven't, but I think part of that is tied to some of the challenges that they are dealing with, just broader societal challenges that you all don't have any, you know, responsibility for. What I was also curious about is, I know Kirby Canyon, I think is, I was calculating on my phone, is about 12 miles away, as opposed to 13 miles, which is not much of a difference granted to the West Yard. Have we done any just basic work as it relates to taking stuff to Kirby Canyon, instead of like Newby Island at some point, or anything like that?
Thank you, Councilmember Andrea Flores Shelton, Deputy with PR and S Beautify SJ. At this time, we work through, we work with ESD, who has told us the exclusive agreement, as we understand it, is with Newby Island, and that's where we get our, our very nominal rate, and so, at this time, I know ESD is looking into this question, given that it's been roached recently, but we, at this time, no, we do not go into Kirby and Morgan Hill.
Okay, all right. The other thing I would lift up is that, you know, so we have the South Yard, actually right behind the, I forget, Station 17 Fire Department, Station 18, right in the corner of Skyway and Monterey Road, so right next to that, or behind that, is the, the South Yard. Next to that, on Monterey Road, is the Walnut Mobile Home Park, but next to Walnut Mobile Home Park, it's actually going to be a housing development, you're going to have hundreds of residents living there, and I suspect that the concerns and things emanating from the yard, we're going to continue to hear about. I know, long before I took office, I think Gosh Kara was already, and Stacy Shi from his office was already dealing with some of this, and it's been a longstanding issue, and so I think the really, the impetus for submitting this is trying to find a resolution that, you know, can alleviate some of the concerns for the residents. So, I'm trying to think through sort of the best way forward. I realize that, I think, underlying a lot of what was put in there is that more analysis is necessary. I know, it seems to me, the most cost-effective and lower-cost approach is a phased approach, but even that, I think, is mentioned, the take upwards of $300,000 to $500,000. But I also recognize and know that oftentimes, and I encountered this in a budget document recently, that when we're asking for cost estimates, sometimes it seems really, really high, and I'm wondering if this is sort of the high end of some of that. So what I'm curious about is if you all, being the experts in the space and touching these issues on a daily basis, if you can help me think through an approach that can maybe, in which we can think about this a little bit more deeply, and figure out if there are any potential solutions that aren't going to cost half a million dollars. So, if you have any thoughts, Lee?
Sure, and I will defer on the pricing of it to our two experts, God knows you don't want me doing that. I think we wanted to put out numbers, knowing that this was, at least in our preliminary analysis, somewhat of a budget constraint, and that you were close to the end of the budget cycle, so we wanted to be transparent around a range, if you wanted to pursue that. I will say, separate from this memorandum, and, you know, a lot of the work we're doing with Beautify SJ, and especially with the stormwater permit stepping in and needing to declare an awful lot more trash, this is a program that we are developing as we're doing, so I know that Rick and Andrea, as well as the team, are going to continue to look at alternatives, because this, this problem has a potential to grow at a lot of yards, and we need to come up with a much more efficient, cost-effective, and equitable way of handling all of the trash throughout the city. So, separate from this document, it is something that I do expect the team to really look at through the year and refine, and again, you know, kudos to you and your office, as well as the team on kind of the good neighbor policy, and some of the shorter-term things that you've done, but I would expect longer-term things to be addressed throughout the year as we continue to build out what this program ultimately is.
Okay, and that, I hadn't thought about that, obviously, the work with the stormwater permit, I mean, what, do we, as it's specific to this yard, I mean, folks are already, we already, my office, and I'm sure the next council member is going to hear the same thing, right? This is, I don't see an end to this, I guess is my point, and so, unless we resolve it in some way, shape, or form, so I'm curious, just based on these comments, and I hadn't thought about this, is the uptick in work that we expect from Beautify SJ team related to the stormwater permit, should we expect that we're going to begin at some point in the not-too-distant future, start sending more trash, more debris, more stuff, garbage, to this particular yard?
So, to South Yard, no. We have an agreement with DOT that we're limiting, we BSJ, and also the Parks Division of PR and S. We're trying to limit perishable, putrisable, that was the new word this week.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Things that decay at that yard, right, to minimize impacts. So we've been, we are trying to limit to appliances, right, to, again, things that are not decayable, that's, and so, when it comes to, I just want to give some context, right, over the last two years, we've gone from 17 million pounds collected by BSJ to 20 million pounds, and I would imagine, as we work more intensively in the waterways, when you think about the weight of everything, we will, we will obviously continue, and given the fact that there are new budget adds to BSJ for next year, you will see that number increase. We are trying to figure out, you know, comprehensively, where it all goes, and we have been elevating and working with DOT and CMO on sort of the yards, the yard issue in a much more holistic way, but in terms of South Yard, there should not be impacts to the yard from the water waste work.
And just a few questions that come to mind as you're mentioning it, thank you for the information. Rick, do you, are we, my, well, I've asked this question of Vanessa on my team, because I know she's been touching this topic much more closely than I have, but, is specific to the South Yard, but are we currently tracking and not allowing any, like, biodegradable, like food scraps and other type of stuff in the South Yard, or, I mean, because my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that is the goal, but it's inevitably difficult to preclude garbage and scraps and food and other decalable, whatever the word was that Andrea used.
Decalable.
Yeah. What is, how are we monitoring sort of what goes in the South Yard?
So, we have had, for several years, we've had the conversation to minimize that type of trash. After the most recent community meeting, we had another conversation, DOT staff and PR and S staff, to do our very best to come close to eliminating it, understanding that that's probably not possible to get to zero, but to be very aware, and even get down to the staff that pick up this trash, to be very conscientious of what's being brought to the South Yard. It's also important to note that BSJ is not the only group that brings trash to the South Yard. There are various events, event pickups, that bring trash to the South Yard from longstanding practice, and the Parks Division also brings trash too. So we've done our best to get out to our partners to minimize that type of trash, but again, I think minimize and mitigate is what we can do right now, you know, and I think that's kind of what the message we shared at that community meeting, and I think we've been pretty consistent with Vanessa and you.
Okay.
I just wanted to add one note that I've shared with Rick, is what we learned at Guadalupe Gardens, and Councilmember Davis may recall this, that the issue of vermin or rodents and rats in particular, we did have a partnership with Vector Control with the county, and did try out rat birth control, and it did have.
Did you say rat birth?
Yes, I did. This is, my children love that I know about rat birth control for some reason. But it did have actual an effect on reducing the juvenile rat population, and so, while this isn't our property, I understand, it, there's an adjacent property where the housing development is, we can look into that and discuss with Vector Control if there's something that they can help us with.
Well, I'd just add also that we restarted, you know, our exterminators, over a period of seven or eight months in 2013, or 2023, hadn't found any signs of rats, and so they basically said, "We're no longer needed here," so that contract expired, and we renewed it. I believe now, it's back in place, so we do have it, and so they're going to assess, but I think it's important to note the geography of the area, the rats are not necessarily originating from our property, there's a lot of areas around where they could be coming from, sort of Andrea's point. It's probably a bigger problem than the South Yard and that dump pile, but we're, you know, it's something that can be looked at.
Is it, so, so if we were into, so for example, I presume that the, the person we've hired to dispose of the rats, find the rats, kill the rats, they haven't had a lot of success finding them, so that leads me, that suggests that they believe that it's not an issue, but.
Originating from the yard.
Correct, and so they may be originating other neighboring sort of parcels, I know there's some hillside there. So what I'm curious about is if we, if we did have some conversations with Vector Control, is it, because I assume some of the work that they're doing is very inclusive of the, of the city property and the South Yard specific, and so, would it, would it be a huge leap to think that it would be possible to get Vector Control, or even the city, to, to expand their scope a little bit outside of the South Yard, to the extent that there are rats in the immediate area?
We can always put in a request to Vector Control, I know they're working on the Zika issues in the East Foothills, but we can always see if they're amenable, because they have, they have a larger scope than we do in terms of our own property.
Yeah, and Rick, would it be possible, the contractor you're working with, that you've hired, you've rehired recently to take care of whatever rats may exist, would it be possible to expand that outside of the yard a little bit, and expand their scope?
I think we need to explore that, just because it would be providing a benefit that's not on our property, so we'd probably have to ask a couple of folks. I can't answer for certain right now, but it's something we can explore.
Okay, all right. And then the very last question I had is. And then, the very last question I had is, is the, the Walnut Mobile Home Park quite literally has a wall that it shares with the South Yard. Are there any other yards around the city that have such a connection to property in which people reside in?
There's a, the West Yard has a wall that is adjacent to a shopping mall. So, it's not, it is not exactly the same, and it's not where people reside. But there's a lot of business there, on Williams Street on the east side, or west side of town.
Okay. And is it, is it same type? I know, South Yard, you got D O T, you got, I assume Public Works doing some work, you have I S J, obviously. Is it the same type of activity going on in the West Yard as it is?
It's a smaller D O T presence, but I don't think as much debris goes there, because frankly, there's probably not as much debris in that area. So, it wouldn't be operationally efficient to use the South Yard as a primary dumping ground for a lot of the different programs that are out there.
Okay. And do you happen to know the radius in which, if garbage is pulled from the side of the road or picked up in a camp? What is that radius around the South Yard in which it would go there, rather than the West Yard? Or, does that make sense? Just curious.
I'd have to get back to you in terms of which routes use the South Yard.
Okay. So, I'm just thinking, like, anything west, south of Alma goes to the South Yard, anything north of Alma is an example, right?
Yeah, I'd have to get back to you on that, Councilmember.
Okay, all right. Okay, I don't know if my colleagues have any questions. I, I'm not quite sure sort of what the best approach is, but I certainly appreciate you looking into this. And I, I, again, I think it's going to continue to be an issue, and I'm not, I'm not quite sure what the best approach is. And I know the money's a challenge. What I would say, if we wanted to go down the road of, you know, I think the, let me just read the, the memo from staff. The latter approach would still require significant staff time analysis, conversations with partners, could be achieved in the next fiscal year, allowing staffs to evaluate. I assume that's the one for a phased-in approach, lower-cost phased-in approach for three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. What would, assuming the will of the body was to send it forward to the full council, I guess, to vote on this, right? Because this would need to go before the full council? If we were, if we were to motion from here, and the votes were here to, to move it forward?
We would ask you to refer it to the city's budget process, so the June eleventh hearing, because ultimately, you do need to pass a balanced budget.
Okay.
Yeah. And it, it is budgetary in nature. Like, we, we don't have the resources to do this unless otherwise directed.
So, then I would motion to do that, and I would just express, as I'm making the motion to my colleagues, that I, my office is going to take it upon ourselves to figure out if we can find some resources for this. But if you would join me in lifting this up.
And the motion is for the, which portion of this?
It would be to do the, to the budget, refer to the budget process, the exploring a lower-cost phased approach that could invest three hundred to five hundred thousand a per disposal of Beautify S J and Parks Division Waste to an outside non-city transfer station, effectively is, I think, is what the lower-cost component of this is.
Would it also ask to cease?
Well, I, I think that, so, right, so the memo that I wrote asks to cease the dumping of the material there, but I think the challenge is that staff's saying, we stopped doing that, it's going to have an impact in other yards, right? I mean, if we said, hey, stop doing this, I think was the original intent of the memo, but you all are lifting up the costs associated with doing so.
Yeah, so, it would also, if we can't take it to other yards, what it really is, is an efficiency issue in terms of us meeting the performance measures of responding to illegal dumping within five days to, and so, it, it just becomes a very inefficient process for us to go to Newby Island. And I just want to note that your motion, Councilmember, you know, we would need some time to sort of flush this out in terms of what it would take to use non-city transfer stations. These are ideas in terms, and we don't have a lot of detail yet, so I just want to, we would need some more time to analyze this.
So, so, Lee, what would you recommend doing then? If, I mean, that component isn't, I guess, necessarily a budget component, although, how, what would be the most appropriate way to say, staff, go look at Kirby Canyon, go look at other options? Or if you have any thoughts, Chair?
Well, I, I don't know if I have any specific thoughts. I mean, I understand the frustration, obviously, that the community and others are feeling, and that when this came forward, it seems like a fairly reasonable, straightforward request. But now, diving into it, it's not as straightforward. If I understand your motion, I think you're asking, you'd be asking for setting aside the budget it would require to do this, the analysis of how to move forward, and then that would come forward with more specifics about what it would cost in the long run, which we'd have to then figure out how to implement. Vice Mayor Comit, do you want to ask us some questions first, and then we'll maybe see if we can formulate?
Devise it.
A motion?
Thank you, yeah. You know, I was curious. Most cities have a waste management plan, and I'm just curious how this all falls into the greater waste management plan, because, as has been mentioned, as we start increasing the, whatever stuff it is, right? You, you, you do need someplace for it to go, right? And the, the memo asks for ceasing, like, not using it at all, which means that, and it wasn't clear to me if, if we say, okay, let's cease it over here, bring it to Mayberry or somewhere else. Is that the five hundred thousand dollars, or is it just, is it just moving? I, it wasn't clear to me what exactly it would pay for. Because, you know, in most waste management plan, you look at the sort of trend line, and you said it was, did you say seventeen million pounds to twenty? Okay, so it is an increase. And as we think about what work we want to do in this next coming year, where we're doing, I would assume, even more because of the cleanup that needs to be done along the waterways, that the volume is going to dramatically increase. And if you don't have a place, I mean, it's sort of the, the, the same issue with, if you don't have a place to put the stuff, then you're a little bit stuck, right? And it doesn't matter if it's five hundred, a million, or whatever. If you have no place to put the stuff, then the alternative means you've got to go further and further away, right? I mean, geographically, if you look at waste throughout our area, there are only so many places that you can go, right? So, I think, first question, do we have a, a solid waste management plan?
I don't know.
Yes. So, we, we have two things. So, a waste management plan is with our Environmental Services Department. Majority of that is focused on residential and commercial hauling in our agreements. And then, the city is also in the process of planning and finalizing what we would call debris management plan that's part of our emergency operations plan and annexes on, on how we deal with that.
Okay. So, I don't know how often that gets looked at. I, I used to be part of the Waste Management and Recycling Commission. And I know that, you know, in terms of how do you start dealing with your garbage and your waste, and whatever it is that, you know, is refused, is, 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 over time, becoming more and more limited. You know, there's only so many places where you can put this stuff. And, you know, the decaying stuff, I think, in different cities are dealt with differently than the, you know, sort of like the refrigerator, washing machines, things, the, the goods. But I, but I think that as part of the whole plan, you know, it needs to be part of not just residential, commercial. It really needs to be part of our overall plan, because I think that the city of San Jose is great. We, if you call, they will pick up your stuff, right, at your home, whatever it is. And over time, you know, the illegal dumping is really terrible. But, you know, I get calls all the time, I'm sure everybody else gets calls on this illegal dumping. And we need, we need a comprehensive view about, you know, what is our waste management stuff all over the place, including for the unhoused, right? Because that, that trajectory, to me, is going up, right? It's not dipping. And so, as we go up, you know, if we lose a location, then we're going to have to figure out, okay, if we cease, that's okay. I think that's, you know, a way to think, you know, address some of the issues here. But it's like playing whack-a-mole, because you're going to have to put it somewhere else. So, where that somewhere else is, is, you know, I, I'd like for staff to, I don't know if we can, we don't really have, like, a lot of time.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify, though, I think, and I guess you can, you're ready to correct me when I'm wrong. The, the, these are staging areas for, for the material, that, what is it, Weekly is taken then to Newby?
Yeah, it's about Weekly now.
So, it's basically the, you can come up with other words too, rubbish.
Transfer, yeah.
That's my favorite version. That it's dropped at these yards and collected, and then taken from the yards to Newby Island. And so, we have a contract with where it eventually ends up, and these are just staging areas. And the question really that was coming forward in this memo that seemed reasonable when we kind of moved it forward at the time was, is there a way for us to stop using this one location as a staging area before it gets to its final destination? It sounds like that's very difficult, and it makes sense, because there's only two other options, and they're far, and it would be an inefficiency to go so far. So, just to understand this analysis in here, the three hundred, five hundred thousand is basically our estimate of what it would cost for one year for us to try to, to find another location that might be somewhat near, but is not currently being used, so maybe a third party, another site, we were talking about, or Morgan Hill, or some other site, and, and make that be the staging area for our garbage before it goes to Newby. Is that the idea?
Yeah, so, much of the cost outlined in here is us using a private provider, whether it be Valley Recycle, Green Waste, instead of our own resources. And that comes with a great cost, which is why we've been using our own property.
I'm sorry, so it was using, instead of the corp yards as transfer stations? It would be using the, you know, South Seventh Transfer Station that, like, my family uses as, as the dump. Instead of going directly to the dump, you go to sort of the local transfer station. So, it would be us using a vendor as the transfer station. So, we would still be picking it up, it would be a part of our routes, and then we would take it there versus the yard.
It would be the cost of a contract with another, with this, without such a location as the locate place where your folks would take the trash as a staging area. And we would still then have the same process to move it to Newby after it's staged there. So, I mean, the spirit, I think, of Councilmember Jimenez's motion is no longer to, is to say, is to explore and spend some budgetary amount in the budget process to find a, a location and sign a contract with that location as an alternative. Is that kind of what you're suggesting?
I think that's accurate. I guess I don't know where the nearest transfer station is, right? I mean, because I don't know if within, I mean, I'll reread it, but I don't know if it mentioned.
There, there's, downtown is one, so they're centrally located. So, that would be helpful from an efficiency standpoint. And then, they do the hauling out.
Okay.
And, and we, we would pay a premium for that, because we have, through our E S D channels, we pay a different rate when we go to Newby Island, and then obviously, when we use our corp yards.
Right. And so, that's the three hundred to five hundred thousand dollar range?
Correct.
Based on the amount of garbage would be diverted there?
Early estimate, yes.
Okay. Okay. One, can I, I know you had, but, but.
Just wanted to sort of.
No, no, yeah, I appreciate you fleshing that out. I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, there, in the analysis, it talks about the potential impact. I mean, so, so, before I go there, so, what you, we just described about the transfer station, about three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars increase in hauling fees related to taking to a different transfer station. That is the least expensive approach to addressing this, is what I gathered from the, from the information in the memo, is that?
I believe at this time, yes. I, I do think, even if you move this forward, and the full council was able to fund this on a, on a one-year basis, I think to my comments and the Vice Mayor's comments is, I do expect this team through the next year, especially as we ramp up a new service delivery model around Beautify S J, as well as how we are supporting our unhoused residents that were moving out of our creeks and riverways, to come up with a more comprehensive and integrated model to how we deal with waste. So, in the long run, this could be way more expensive, or we might find efficiencies. But at this point in time, I mean, Beautify S J is, under Andrea's leadership, has gone from a pretty scrappy startup to, to one of the larger programs that we run in the city, kind of overnight, honestly. And so, as she is continuing to implement with her team, you know, the manager's office, E S D, D O T, her and others, will be doing longer-term planning around what are the efficiencies and the actual operations model we need in the long term for when we're at a peak, but also hopefully, over time, once we can catch up with some of this, it starts to go down as well, I would suspect, because we are at an all-time high for removal of, of waste and trash throughout the entire city.
Okay. And I think the longer-term approach, or the changes that are fundamentally going to be needed, structural changes at the West Yard and Mayberry Yard, right, is what I also, if, assuming we did this long-term, there would need to be some changes there. I just put out there that I suspect that those changes are going to need to move forward anyway at some point, given the increased workload of Beautify S J and the, everything we're doing on the stormwater permit. So, I think it's good to keep that in mind. What I'd be curious, and I'd love to hear both from staff, as well as my colleagues, what I'm thinking about is, so, so if the minimum cost that we've estimated, which I, I'd like to think it could be lower, is three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars increased hauling, that, that, that estimates about a, a year? Is that, is that?
Yes, and I, I want to be clear, it's not increased hauling. It's, it's just moving, diverting from South Yard. So, we're, we are.
Doing the same.
Doing the same, taking it to a different location.
Paying a little bit more, because, right, right, okay. So, so what I would ask my colleagues, if they would entertain an idea, again, I'm just thinking about this as we're going through this. It's, you know, gotten a little bit more convoluted than I would have liked, is, is maybe the, if I made a motion directing staff to bring forward an M B A on a six-month pilot to move some of this, what the cost would be? And let me know if I'm off-base here, what the cost would be to send this existing garbage to a different transfer station for six months to see what the impact is on these, on, on the neighbors of Walnut and Mobile Home Park? It would come forward as an M B A, and we can figure out whether it would be incorporated in the larger budget? If that sounds like reasonable.
We're hoping to have all the M Bs out by the end of the day, or tomorrow, quite frankly. I do think, obviously, this is an agendized and public document, Councilmembers, so you certainly could write a blue memo on the eleventh. And trying to identify the three hundred or, or five hundred thousand dollars as an offset is probably the fastest way, because you do actually have a cost estimate here. I mean, this is equivalent to a cost estimate. It just came to rules a week too late for the budget document process, in, in reality.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is this, because this, this is sort of a, we, we would move it forward as a rules committee to sort of turn it into a budget document, you know, without having to do the official writing of a budget document. It becomes one, because you have a cost estimate. And then, you, and your, as we formulate the budget, would be figuring out what the trade-offs are to fund this, this item in the budget process. So, that's why the motion is put it into the budget process. And, you know, work between now and, you know, your office does most of the legwork at that point about how to work it in, but.
Okay, that's fine, then, then that, that makes sense to me. So, I, I won't make the motion, and we'll just see.
Well, I mean, I think, should we still, probably should take a motion to put it, to refer this to the budget process, but then that becomes the, so that this becomes another, I don't know.
We could certainly refer, refer it to its own item, but quite frankly, I think on the eleventh, which is now item three point four, everything needs to be in that. So, it probably is the simplest, Councilmember, for you to write.
Yes, so I won't make a motion, and then we'll, we'll see what we do for the eleventh as it relates to, and we'll probably talk to, to relevant staff before that to figure out if it's possible to do some sort of pilot, what that would cost, assuming we would.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, that seems like reasonable. Second?
Well, he's not making a motion.
Oh, no, not making a motion. You're just, you're just, this is, because this exists as a cost estimate, you're just going to move forward with the process? Okay, that's, that's fair. All right, any other comments? I think we have exhausted that one, and we'll see how it moves forward. That brings us to our final item for today's meeting, the open forum. We have. meeting, the open forum. We have public comment?
Claire?
Hi, Claire Beekman. This is going to be one of my last times appearing at public comment time here in San Jose. By this fall, I'm going to be moving to Hawaii, and then to possibly, hopefully, Southeast Asia. So I really hope that you can continue the Zoom meeting process, and that can return, and you can work out its difficulties. I think there are ways you can. And it's been a real help and service to many people who can't make the meetings. Thank you that you have these translation services going on. I think we've really improved upon past Google translation things that, man, that is a really hopeful future, how everyone can be invited to the future of the community process. Good luck in always looking towards accessibility and openness. And I'll be back here once more in November, and I'm out of here, as the song goes. So, yeah, this will be one of my last times here. So with that said, good luck, I guess, first, in taking care and talking with Paul Soto. I really feel, I think many of us feel he got kind of a bad deal in not being allowed in through, because of bicycle issues, and he had a fallout with the police at that time. Good luck in working with Paul, and working on parameters, and working out ways that he can have public comment, again, you know, parameters and understandings. Good luck in that effort. In my final thirty seconds, I heard you guys talk about the issues of broadband, not broadband, smart kiosks in the downtown area. And I'll be talking more on this subject in the upcoming weeks, but it is a difficult subject. Thank you that city government staff is really taking their time with this issue, like with the billboard issue. It'll come back here in the fall. There's a reason for that. Good luck how we can work on this openly. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
Okay, thank you so much. We are adjourned at 2:052 PM.